Good morning, everyone. I want to try a different format today. And once again, as you notice, I'm coming to you from the cellphone versus my setup here. It's the webcam I usually use and then my microphone. I've been using Restream for my live streams. But today's format, we're actually going to move around here a little bit, I think. Because this is actually something I was just, I was kicking around, I was like, what about a live study session? Just to kind of, I don't know, just study something with you, you know, just kind of get your feedback on it, show you how I generally dig into something, and it just could be kind of fun. It doesn't have to be long, maybe 20 minutes or so, but I thought it would be, it'd be cool. So today, I want to start out by watching a reel, and this is an Instagram reel. And I'm just gonna turn the camera, and it's gonna be kind of janky the way we're gonna look at it here. But it's an Instagram reel, and it's, it's from this account that is extremely popular. I think they might have like 2 million followers. They get thousands upon thousands of likes every time they put something out. And I've seen a lot of content from them that has been good. It's been good content, they've nailed the gospel, they've hit the nail on the head, so to speak, I suppose. But they, they've really, you know, there's been good content too. But then, then there's stuff like this. And this is the kind of thing that I feel like really deserves a good study, digging into it. So let's start out by watching this here. I'm gonna turn the camera, and hopefully, you're not gonna be able to see the video super well, but you'll probably be able to hear it. So let's play this.
... made holy. And there's positional sanctification, and then there's lifelong sanctification. Upon being saved, you are positionally sanctified. You are immediately set apart, you are God's child, you are a son or daughter of Jesus Christ. And then the really fun part is the lifelong sanctification, where God throughout our whole lives is gonna try and make us holy. And he's gonna prune us, and he's gonna sanctify us. And it says in John 15, that he cuts off the branches that don't produce fruit. And the ones that do produce fruit, he prunes them to make sure that they bear more fruit. And if we remain in him, he will remain in us, and we will bear fruit only if we are remaining in him. And so, our sanctification and pruning process has been so painful.
Yes, don't think it's gonna be easy.
It has been the craziest year of our lives, to have lived a certain way our whole life in the world, and then to be like, there's so much I have to change. And it's so funny, because you reach a level of holiness, and you think you're good, and you think you got it all, and then God's like, oh, I'm gonna show you all this that you didn't even know was in there. It's so fun.
Alright, what did you think of that? So sanctification, there's positional sanctification, and then there's lifelong sanctification. So again, almost 14,000 likes with this, okay? This is considered wisdom. This is, and it's not, we're not saying anything negative about these girls that do this podcast, anything like that. But their position that they're holding here is extremely common. This is taught everywhere in the church, that there's, they call it usually progressive sanctification. But yeah, this lifelong sanctification, and then there's the positional one. The positional one doesn't really matter, like they, you know, that one is just like, well, whatever. You know, you're, you're positionally sanctified the moment that you're saved. And that's how they explain away all those verses that have sanctification being a past tense process. They say, well, that's the positional sanctification. And then they grab the ones that have a future tense, kind of ring to them, and they say, and that's the lifelong, that's the progressive sanctification. So you see, there's two types. Okay, so let's study that. I mean, let's, let's look at sanctification, let's, let's try to figure this out. So typically, when I want to do a word study, there's a couple things I'll do, just, just to kind of get going here. I have, I want to show you this here. I have a very small library over here. You've probably seen it in the back of a lot of the live streams I've done. And essentially, I'll move a little closer to it. It is pretty much all dictionaries and concordances. Tons of bibles in there, I gotta get the, like, the camera thing down, tons of bibles in there. But it is pretty much just dictionaries and concordances. I don't have anything that's like theology books, or anything from like, I do have like some very minor church history stuff, but I don't even really like that. But really, it's a bunch of dictionaries and concordances, and it's for the purpose of, of these kind of word studies. So the first thing I'll do is I'll grab this, this is my most trusted one. This is Mount's Expository Dictionary. This is really, really good. I don't agree with a lot of the theology he puts in here, because you know, he'll, he'll probably tell us, we're gonna look it up here in a second, he'll probably tell us about progressive sanctification. But as far as his Greek to English translations, very, very good. It also has Hebrew in it too. You can pick this up on Amazon for like 30 bucks. So if this was a commercial, I would, I would definitely, yeah, I would definitely recommend Mount's Expository Dictionary. So let's grab that one. And sometimes, if I don't like what I find in Mount's, I will go to a different one. And I have like, kind of like a, a way I do this, like a kind of a cascading order, if you will. But let's quickly look up sanctification in here. And by quickly, I hope, I should have probably pre-bookmarked this, because this is a live stream, but hey, you know, whatever. So I know that, you know, just, just kind of while I'm finding this, I'll just tell you a couple things I'm, I'm thinking going into this. I've studied sanctification before. I believe it's the Greek word hagiasso, or hagiost, that's one of the two. And it's the same word that's used for saint and for holy. It's all the same word, from what I remember. So, okay, so I found it here. I wonder if you can see this text, I don't know how clear this picture is. But if you can see this right here, it says sanctification, but it actually doesn't have a definition. It says sanctification, and then it says see holy. So look up the word holy to find out what sanctification is. So that's, that's, you know, they're, they're not just closely related, these words, they're actually the same word. And that's, that's what we're seeing here, it's actually the exact same word. And in this video we just watched, she's kind of going down that path a little bit, isn't she? Because she's saying that sanctification means to be set apart or to be made holy. So she's not necessarily wrong with that, she's linking those two. It's just perhaps the definition that follows, and this is what it means to be sanctified, or this is what it means to be made holy, that she's, we might disagree with that. But they do actually have, so before we go and look up the word holy, he does actually have sanctify. And let's look at that quickly, because that's gonna be that Greek word. So it is hagiasso. This is from memory, so this could be wrong. And somebody might say that, you know, okay, that's, that's the wrong way of putting this. But from memory, I believe hagiost is holy, and hagiasso is kind of like an action type of, is it a, is it a verb? It's a verb, so it's an action. Hagiasso is the action, that's the, that's something that was previously unholy, being made holy. That's us. So us, the children of God, previously were unholy, but we have been made holy. We have been sanctified through the body of Jesus Christ once for all time. That's what Hebrews says. By that, well, we have been sanctified. So that's, that's us, that describes us. You could use that in the Old Testament to describe objects that were purified by blood in the Old Covenant. They were sanctified by the blood of bulls and goats. They were unholy, and they were made holy. So that's sanctify, that's the process, it is a process, but it's not something that's lifelong. It's like you're literally moving from one to the other. Kind of like when you move from death to life, when you look to the Son and believe in him. It's like that, you're moving from one to the other, it's an absolute, it's not some kind of a long drawn out thing. But regardless here, let's read the definition of hagiasso. So hagiasso is usually rendered make holy, sanctify, or consecrate. Consecrate is pretty rare, that one doesn't show up much. In the New Testament, this verb expresses the action of including a person or thing in the sphere of what is holy, either in ritual, ceremonial, or a moral sense. So that's correct, I would agree with Mr. Mount on this. You're taking something that's unholy, and you are making it holy. So the adjective here is hagiost, so okay, I might have been a little wrong about that. In general, two facts stand out in the New Testament regarding hagiost. First, God and what is associated with him is declared to be holy. Second, the proper sphere of holy in the New Testament is not the priestly ritual, priestly or ritual, rather, but the prophetic. I don't know about that, I would have to see examples of that. But regardless, that's what we have for sanctify. So let's look up sanctification, we have to find that one, because that's what we're talking about here. So sanctify, we have the definition, and we might consult some other sources here. But sanctify, we have the definition of this is something that was unholy, that has been made holy. Okay, and I think that Mr. Mount agrees with us on that. That's what I thought going into it, but I think he agrees with us on that. So let's look up the word holy now. I actually, believe it or not, just turned to it, yeah. I just actually turned to it, so how do you like that? Alright, so the word holy here again is hagiasso. So this is all the same exact word. So holy and sanctify, sanctification, sanctifies, these are the exact same word. And saint, which we're referred to in the New Testament, is that same word, it's hagiost, so it's that exact same word. So all of these are the same thing, okay? And it's all referring to holy, to being, to being holy, so that's kind of neat. And again, I think she said that, but I digress. So again, it says, um, New Testament, hagiasso is usually rendered make holy, sanctify, or consecrate. So exactly what we just read about sanctification. Now, he's got the same description here, but he's got like some scripture that basically says, and here's where you see this show up, here's where you see sanctification or holy show up in scripture. So the part that we didn't get previously is this, and I want to read this here. Paul's letters, those who named Jesus as their Lord are called hagiost, saints. This is not primarily an ethical expression, but it's parallel to being called, called out, chosen, kind of like that, set apart. You could, you could say that. I think that's really a secondary definition, set apart for sanctified, it can mean that, it absolutely can mean that. But really, the word is holy, I mean, it's the exact same word. Now, you might say holy means to be set apart. And sure, I, I think it could mean that too. But it might be a little bit more than that too. It might, I think it might be just, you know, set apart, yes, set apart as holy, you know, holy in the same way that God is holy, in the same way that Jesus is holy. I think it's weightier than that, than just, than just set apart, but that's my opinion on it. So I think we got some good definitions in this one here. I'm gonna, I'm gonna save this, just keep it kind of open here on the table in case we need to reference it later on. Because I'm actually, we're gonna go and kind of like do a keyword search here in the New Testament to try to find some examples of this being used. And remember, what we're looking for in this, is we're looking for some kind of a lifelong sanctification process. Because that's what's being taught here, is this lifelong sanctification. So that's what we're after, we're trying to find some shred of evidence that that's a thing. Uh, you know, in this video, she actually mentioned levels of holiness. She was like, when you reach this level of holiness, you think you got it all, but then God's like, oh, I want to show you this, this more. And then kind of mentioned the vine and the branches to proof text that a little bit. So is there anything else I would want to? I really was pretty satisfied with what we got in Mount's Dictionary. I think the only thing, and I don't know if I would use this normally, I might just use it to, for, for like, for the video purpose here. And because we're here, because we're here, I might as well show, I might as well show you one of the best, second best resources you can acquire, if you have a, kind of like a little study library like this. This is the Zondervan Greek-English interliner New Testament. I recognize that, uh, recognize, I recommend this to absolutely everybody. This is great for word studies, kind of like what we're doing today. If there was a particular part in scripture that you wanted to look up, okay, sanctify, sanctifies, one of the English bibles is rendering it this way, hagiasso appears. What does it look like in the original texts? What this has is the Greek texts right next to the English. So you have the, you have, basically on the side here, you have the NIV, and you have the NASB. So you have those English bibles for reference, but then you actually have the Greek right here too. And you, you can see really how this was, it's not perfect, I mean, no, no Greek to English translation is perfect, but it's close. You know, you can see how this Greek is being really translated into English. You can see what words were added to kind of make it flow a little better, so it's nice. So we'll hang on to it, I don't know if we're gonna reference it or not, but I'm gonna take at least these two books. And I don't know, I don't know if we need to dig any deeper than that, let's go to the New Testament though. So let's come back over here, and I will show you what I normally do, if I can show it to you on here. How I'll normally go about this. So Bible Gateway is gonna be our best friend for something like this. I don't know if you're gonna be able to see the actual text on the screen, I might have to take the phone off and like move it up closer. But Bible Gateway is gonna be our best friend for something like this. So the first thing that I would say is, this is NIV, I think it defaults to NIV. I would switch it over to NASB. Now, the reason for that is because you want to use a word-for-word translation when you're doing a word study. Uh, let me show you why, actually. Let's go back to NIV here quickly, um, if we can, let me... Bible Gateway, by the way, is notoriously glitchy like this. So let's try this again. Maybe I should close this Instagram. Yeah, yeah. Well, what are you gonna do? I mean, it's like, every time that, like something, when I do something live, there's always like some kind of a problem, like what you just saw there. But okay, uh, let's try, so let me, let me show you this. If we went to put in sanctify on NIV, it is gonna show up on here, not much. So you see that, here, let me take the phone off here so we can see this a little bit better. See, it's hard for me to tell where it's looking, because I can't see the actual screen, but... So you got six results, I hope you can see that. You have six results, and they're not, I'm just gonna put it back on here. They're not, uh... They're basically, I think that other translations would render it this way. But it's, it's essentially the reason they're so, the results on this are so low is because NIV typically will render sanctification or sanctify as make holy, which is okay. But I don't know, I mean, for something like this, I probably wouldn't use it. So let's try to use NASB if Bible Gateway will cooperate with us. You know what's so funny? I have never had it do this, to where it actually will like, just not want to work for us. But I guess we're gonna have to go old school with this, and use a concordance if we can't, um, if we can't get it to work. So that's fine, I guess, we're gonna have to go, okay. So sometimes, sometimes stuff like that happens. I've never had that happen before. I have never ever had Bible Gateway just completely take a crap on me before. This is the first time ever, and of course, it happens during a live video. Um, let me just try opening a new tab here quickly, because this will make it a lot easier, man. If we can use Bible Gateway, that'll make this a lot easier than if we have to go to a concordance. But hey, we can go the old way too. Let's, come on, Bible Gateway, don't, don't do this to us, don't, don't do this to us. Maybe you just need to be like completely rebooted here. Okay, it's gonna work, alright. So now we're on, we're on the, um... Oh, it's, it's mirrored, okay, so, so I see what you're saying, so it's mirrored, so you wouldn't be able to see the text anyway. So I'll just have to talk through it then, and let you know what the results look like on here, okay? Because I guess, I didn't even think about that, the camera's gonna have everything mirrored. I know when you record, if you record a video, you can turn that off, but I don't think there's any such setting in a live stream. So if this will allow it, let's go and look up sanctify. And if not, if it doesn't work this time, we are going to definitely go get the concordance. Okay, so now remember when we looked this up in NIV, when we looked up sanctify, there was six mentions of this in the New Testament. NASB has eight mentions, so it's, it's not rendering it as make holy as much. Let's look up sanctification. Because that's kind of the one in question here, right? Okay, sanctification is mentioned eight times in the New Testament, so we can run through these. I mean, eight times isn't that many times. Let's look at these, Romans. This is interesting, okay, so Romans is the first mention of this. And NIV, I'm so used to NIV, because that's usually what I read and listen to. Listen to this, this is Romans 6:19. Uh, this is when, now Paul is talking, Romans chapter 6 is when he's doing this contrast between slave of sin and slave of righteousness. He's going back and forth on this, the slave, you know, thanks be to God, though, you used to be a slave of sin, you've become to obey from your heart the pattern of teaching, this now claims your allegiance, you've been set free from sin, and now you're, you're a slave of righteousness. So this is that part of scripture, okay? Now, what he says here in this next verse, he says, "I'm speaking in human terms because of the weakness of your flesh." And what NIV will say, there is something like this, he says, "I'm taking an example from everyday life because of, of weakness of your..." I think he might say weakness of your flesh, but because your human limitations, it might say, I think that sounds more familiar. But regardless, uh, he says here, "For just as you presented the parts of your body as slaves to impurity and to lawlessness resulting in further lawlessness, now present your body as parts as slaves to righteousness resulting in sanctification." So that's, if you were just to grab that and pluck that out of Romans chapter 6, you might be able to come up with a progressive, or a lifelong, as these girls said, a lifelong sanctification. You might be able to do that, because he's saying, "Just as you used to present your, the parts of your body, you know, for wickedness, now present them for sanctification." So I could see that, especially if you don't, you know, if you don't kind of dig into sanctification, like what, kind of what sanctification is. I could see that, I could see somebody coming up with that. I would think that'd be illogical. But you, again, you would have to pull that verse out of Romans 6, you can't read chapter 5, you can't read chapter 7, you have to read that verse. But if you're gonna do that, well, hey, then, then maybe you could come up with this. So now he says, and really, you would have to not read a couple verses up, because the next mention of sanctification is actually Romans 6:22. And this is, again, it's, it's that contrast between a slave, being a slave of sin and a slave of righteousness. But he says, "But now having been, been freed from sin and enslaved to God, you derive your benefit resulting in sanctification and the outcome is eternal life." So I think NIV says resulting in holiness, but really, you know, you've been set free from sin, you are now a slave to righteousness. Remember that Romans chapter 6 starts out by saying that you died, you were buried with Christ, and you were raised with him. You were baptized into his death. In the same way, count yourself dead to sin but alive to God in Christ Jesus. So all of that is in the same chapter, and he's kind of ending this chapter, saying that this is resulting in sanctification. Now, these two uses here of sanctification, look, I think that if, yeah, I, I think you could get easily confused on these. I really, I really do, I think these could be confusing. So let's, let's keep going here. And let's look at 1 Corinthians, I know where this one is gonna be. Oh, okay, it's actually not, it's not the one I thought it was gonna be. Um, so 1 Corinthians 1:30 says this. It says, "But it is, it is due to him that you are in Christ Jesus, who became to us wisdom from God and righteousness and sanctification and redemption." So here you have Jesus being, Paul is defining our sanctification as Jesus himself, you could say that. Now, in 1 Corinthians chapter 1, really what you have going on here, because he's mentioning wisdom, he's saying Jesus has become to us the wisdom of God. You have this, this contrast going on between wisdom and foolishness in the first chapter. There's the wisdom of the world is foolishness, um, I'm sorry, yeah, to God. Yeah, the wisdom of the world is foolishness to God, the message of the cross is foolishness to the world. You have this kind of back and forth, and he's getting down to this part of it. But he's, but really, this is kind of cool, because he's defining Jesus as being our sanctification. Jesus is our sanctification, along with our righteousness, redemption, and wisdom. He's all of those things, he's everything to us there. So let's go to, and then the next time, and this is really, 1 Thessalonians is really where I think a lot of progressive sanctification ideas come from, is from 1 Thessalonians. So he says this, and this is 1 Thessalonians 4:3. It says, "For this is the will of, for this is the will of God, your sanctification." That is, that you abstain from sexual immorality, and let's grab the context of this. "That each of you knew how to possess his own vessel in sanctification and in honor." So it's kind of similar, I feel like, to what you have in, is it 1 Peter? That says, um, you know, "Just as he who called you is holy, also be holy in all your behavior, for it is written, be holy as I am holy." I think it's similar to that. You know, the will of God, Jesus tells us what, what the will of God is. So there's not two wills of God, there's one, at least in my opinion, I don't think there's multiple wills of God. You know, Jesus says, "His Father's will is that everyone who looks to the Son and believes in him shall have eternal life, and he himself will raise us up on the last day." So here you have, this is the will of God, your sanctification. But you also have that same author say that Jesus is our sanctification. So I think when you use it all together, it's not really that confusing. It, it actually works, if the will of God is that we be in Christ, and he is our sanctification, then the will of God is our sanctification. You see what I'm saying? So it's, it's like, it, it does work. I think if you were to pull these all out and start like using them individually, and not referencing the, you know, all of scripture, I think, yeah, you could probably come up with something here. So let's, and, and that's really, like I said, really, when I hear a lot of progressive sanctification teachings, that's really the one they'll go to. They also will go to, uh, what is it, Philippians, where Paul says, "Not that I've already attained this, I've already reached my goal, but I press on." Uh, they like that too, they think that's about sanctification. But he also says at the end of that, "So let us live up to what we've already attained." So I don't know if they like that last part, but they like at least the beginning of it. But sanctification isn't actually mentioned there, they're, they're kind of like imagining that that's about sanctification. So then he says, uh, 1 Thessalonians 4:7, I think we read this when we did the context, but he says, "For God has not called us for, called us in impurity but in sanctification." So, okay. And then the final mention of sanctification in the New Testament, that word sanctification, comes from 2 Thessalonians 2:13, and this is what it says. "But we should always give thanks to God for you brothers and sisters beloved by the Lord, because God has chosen you from the beginning for salvation through sanctification by the Spirit and faith in the truth." Now, some translations will say the sanctifying work of the Spirit. The sanctifying work of the Spirit. And that's where you get this whole idea that the Spirit is an agent of sanctification. You can say it if you want to, I don't know if it's necessarily wrong. But it would be a one-time thing, it would be being placed in Christ, it would not be the Spirit is consistently sanctifying you. Now, you do have transforming us by the renewing of our mind, you do have that, but that's not the same thing. That's not referred to as sanctification, that's you growing, you're maturing. You're kind of growing into who you already are, it's, it's kind of like what we said a little earlier, you're living up to what you've already attained. So you're, you're being holy in all your behavior, just as the one who called you is holy. So there is that, but that's not referred to as sanctification. Sanctification is, is being made holy, which you are once for all time. So that is it, as far as the New Testament goes about sanctification. So I want to look up one more word, and then we'll go back to this, this video that we watched at the very beginning, that's telling us that there's lifelong sanctification, and that there's positional sanctification. But one thing we have established, is by looking up the eight mentions of sanctification in the New Testament, none of them say lifelong, and none of them say positional. Those are, that, those terms are just flat out made up, they're, they're not there. So there's no lifelong sanctification, and there's no positional sanctification. If you wanted to use positional, it would be something that's not in scripture, but it would have to be that the position is that you're in Christ, and that's your positional sanctification, it's positional permanently. Um, it's not, I guess positional and permanently don't even work together, do they? Because aren't they opposite words? So you, you really can't use it at all if you're going by what's in the New Testament. So, alright, so let's look up sanctifies. I think that what I might do, or sanctified, I'm sorry, not sanctifies. I think what I might do, because, uh, one of you, one of you guys had mentioned that the text is reversed, so I can't really show you anything on here. I know that Restream actually has a cool way, you can pre-record a video, and then you can stream it live, and I've done it a couple of times. So I might do that next time, because I can actually get that camera reversed. Bible Gateway is crashing on us again, guys, but we'll get it. I have never had it act like this. I'll tell you what, I have used Bible Gateway for the past four years now, non-stop, and I have never had it crash, just like a ton. Uh, when we're trying to do something on here, so let me see if I can get it to work for us now. So maybe there's other Bible search engines, if anybody knows about them, if this one's gonna prove to be unreliable for us. I know that there's Bible Hub, but I never liked that one. I thought that one had a lot of ads on it, and it just wasn't as smooth. But anyway, it worked. So Blue Letter Bible, I've heard of it, I, I've heard of Blue Letter Bible, but I've never actually used it. So, but it did work, it did finally work for us. So sanctified is mentioned 15 times in the New Testament, 15 mentions. So we can run through them, because that's not that many, and some of them are gonna be super, super quick. So the first time, and I'm gonna skip the ones in the Gospels, so, except maybe I'm not, because John, I think, has some good mentions here. Uh, the only other mention, incidentally, is in Matthew, and it's Jesus saying, "What is more holy? The gold in the temple or the temple that sanctified the gold?" That's the only mention in the synoptics of the word sanctified. This one from John here, there's two. Jesus is speaking of himself, and he's saying that he is the one who the Father sanctified and sent into the world. And I really think in that context, you could say set apart, because it kind of makes a little bit more sense there. He set Jesus apart and sent him into the world. You, I don't think that Jesus, this is interesting. And I think we could go down a whole, we could, we could go in an interesting direction with this. Did Jesus need to be made holy? Because he didn't need to be made perfect, you know, and we have Hebrews say that. I've always understood that as perfect to us, our perfect high priest, our perfect sacrifice, our perfect intercessor. He was made perfect by what he suffered, I've always understood it that way. I know that when I taught on progressive sanctification a long time ago, and was teaching that this wasn't correct, somebody said, "Well, Jesus said he had to be sanctified, so it can't be being made holy, because then you were, you'd have to say Jesus needed to be made holy," you know, you'd have to say something like that. So it, it at least is interesting. But the scripture that was referenced there was John 17:19, where Jesus is praying, and he says, "And for their sakes I sanctify myself, so that they may truly be sanctified in the truth." You know, I think that that would be a whole study on its own, that, but anyway, you look at, Jesus is saying that he's setting himself apart, I think, I think that's how you would define that there. But again, I think we'd also have to dig into it a little bit more, um, so that we truly may be set apart. Because you know, in the same prayer, he says, "They're not of the world just like I'm not of the world." And he says, "I want them to be in us, just like I am in you, Father, and, and you're in me, I want them to be in us, and, uh, so that they may be one, just as we are one." So I think this all is kind of working together there. I don't, I wouldn't say, you know, just out of the gates here, just to give you an opinion without really studying this, I wouldn't say Jesus had to be made holy, I don't think that that would be correct. Why would he be unholy? He was never in Adam, you know, he was never, he was never in Adam, so why would he ever have been unholy? That's, that's what I would say about that, I think it'd be very hard to make a case that he was somehow unholy and had to be made holy. I don't think that's what Hebrews is saying, when it's saying that he was made perfect by what he, what he suffered,[1730.66] And I don't think that's what John 17 is saying here. So, going down here a little bit, Jesus actually says this. This is interesting. This is from Acts, chapter 20. So, what you have here is more dialogue for the story of Paul on the road to Damascus. You know, when you see this early on in Acts, and Paul gets God smacked on his way into Damascus, you don't really see a lot of exchange between Jesus and Paul. But later on in the book of Acts, Paul reveals that there was actually a humongous conversation here. And he gives some different dialogue from it. He says, "Actually, you know, we talked about a lot of things here." So, this is part of that conversation. You get it filled in here later in Acts, chapter 20. And, oh my gosh. And basically, what happened is Bible Gateway crashed on us here. So, I'm going to have to try to do this by memory. I have never had it behave like this, guys. I might just have to grab an actual Bible. Um, let me just see if I can refresh it. I don't know. Okay, so what was it called? Was it Blue Letter Bible? We might look that one up here in a second. Yeah, it is just not going to work. Okay, so let's look up, let's go to Blue Letter Bible. Is it something we can search on here? I, like I said, I've never used it, but I have heard good things about it. This Facebook group that I'm in, a lot of people will advocate for Blue Letter Bible. But I was, up until today, very satisfied with Bible Gateway. But apparently, it doesn't want to work for us. So, let's go to NASB. Okay, this looks pretty doable. NASB, if it'll let us do that. Maybe it's me. Maybe it's something with my computer. Um, no, this seems to be working. Okay. Sanctified, okay. No, this is working good. Okay, we're back. We're using a different search engine, but we're back. Okay? So, except it's going to show us everything in the Old Testament. Oh, no, here we go. Okay. So, this is Jesus saying this. This is what we were about to read before Bible Gateway took a crap on us. Uh, he says, he's talking about Paul's kind of his mission here. I wish we could pull up the context on it here, but regardless, he says that, uh, he's, this is Jesus speaking to Paul, and he says, "And now I entrust you..." Um, to, I think this is, I think this is the part he's saying. He's saying that, uh, "to open their eyes so they may..." He's saying, "I'm sending you to the Gentiles, okay? I'm doing this part by memory, but he's saying, "I'm sending you to the Gentiles." And he's saying, "To open their eyes, that they may turn from darkness to light, from the power of Satan to God, that they may receive forgiveness of sins in an inheritance among those who have been sanctified by faith in Me." Have been sanctified, past tense. So, this is the, he's saying Paul is this light to the Gentiles, but he's saying, like, "Look, you're going to turn them from darkness to light. They're going to receive an inheritance among those who have been sanctified." You can click on the verse for more. Okay, I'll do that. I was trying to find, because like Bible Gateway has this little thing where you can click the context, and it'll pull up the verses all around it. But that was back when Bible Gateway worked. So, now, you know, we have to explore other options here. But regardless, you have have been sanctified. This is past tense there. Uh, just going down here a little bit, Paul in Romans 15 mentions that his ministry, um, his offering of the Gentiles may be acceptable, sanctified by the Holy Spirit. This is kind of, you know, Jesus gave him this commission, and now he's saying that he's at least partially achieved this, because now there are Gentiles that are placing their faith in Jesus, and he's referring to them as sanctified. You know, Jesus said it, Paul said it. You know, they're kind of in green here. This is actually a really good one here. I'm going to click on the verse. Let me see if I click on it here. Okay, I see. So, when you click on the verse, it pulls up like most of the chapter here. It actually highlights the one you were looking for. This is a really nice tool. So, alright, so 1 Corinthians, chapter six, is a legalistic favorite, this first part here. They love saying this. They'll quote nine and 10 so much. They will quote nine and 10 so much. Every time they have somebody that they want to condemn, they love going to 1 Corinthians 6, 9, and 10, and it says this. It says, "Or do you not know that the unrighteous will not inherit the kingdom of God? Do not be deceived, neither the sexually immoral, nor idolaters, nor adulterers, nor homosexuals, nor thieves, nor the greedy, nor those habitually drunk, nor verbal abusers, nor swindlers, will inherit the kingdom of God." They love that. They love smacking you with that, don't they? I see that in the comment sections all the time, especially in Pride Month. Alright, but you have to read down a little bit further, okay? Because this is the part that is just bananas to them, to read this a little bit further, okay? And he says, "Such were some of you, but you were washed, you were sanctified, you were justified, in the name of our Lord Jesus Christ, and in the spirit of our God." Okay, these fleshly identities that he just mentioned here is who you were, not who you are. You've looked to the Son and believed in Him. You have been sanctified. You've been washed, you've been justified. Justified means to be declared righteous, okay? "That's all true of you, regardless. That's who you were." Some translations will say that that's who you were, or that's who you were. I think NFV might say that. But that's who you were. That's past. You have been sanctified. You have moved from death to life. They don't understand that, and it makes me worry about them that they have not moved from death to life. Because it's like when you try to like even go a little bit further and like tell that to them, they take all of those words, and they try to belittle them all. Sanctification is a process that goes on your entire life. Justified just means, it doesn't really mean anything, honestly. It means that you're going to heaven. Washed, well, yes, but you can become dirty again. So, you have to constantly go in and try to confess that sin and get clean again. You know, so it's like they don't, they don't really grasp that. You know, the gospel, I don't know why they even call it that, because gospel means good news. There's no good news there, if this is not what it's saying. If this is, you know, if this is some wacky interpretation of this, where Paul didn't mean what he exactly just said there. But regardless, they love the first part, do not like the second part. But that place of sanctification is past tense for the child of God. So, let's go on to the next one here. I'm going to skip 1 Corinthians, chapter seven. I think we've done a livestream on that, where the husband is sanctified through his wife, and the wife through her husband. Boy, is that complicated? I've given you guys a lot of theories on what that could possibly mean. None of them, I think, are very good. I don't think any of my theories on it were very good, but I've offered a few of them there. But let's just skip past that one, and let's go on to... Uh, okay, so I think, you know, in Titus, you have something about being clean and unclean. You know, anything can be sanctified by the word of God and by prayer. That's not really talking about this. That's not really talking about lifelong sanctification or progressive. Um, there's a bit in 2 Timothy, which people will kind of use. Anyone who kind of purifies themselves from this evil will be useful to the master, an implement for honor sanctified, prepared for every good work. I get that. Let's read this here a little bit, actually. We probably ought to dig into that one. Because that one is probably one that I think people could say is progressive sanctification. So, it starts in verse 20. This is 2 Timothy 2:20. Paul's speaking to Timothy, of course. And he says, "In a large house there are not only gold and silver implements, but also implements of wood and of earthenware," that's just like clay or pottery of some kind, "and some are for honor while others are for dishonor." Okay, "Therefore, if anyone cleanses himself from these things, he will be an implement for honor sanctified, useful to the master, and prepared for every good work." So, there's a lot of bad conclusions I think you could draw from that right away. You could say that, if you're going to look at this as children of God, you could say that there are some that are for common use and some that are for special purposes. I think that's wrong. I don't think that, that's kind of has almost a flavor of Calvinism, but not really, because it's like, well, these would all be Christians, but some would be special. Like, these are the super Christians, and other ones are just your, you know, your pew warmers. I could see a whole bad idea coming out of that, and I do not think that's at all what he's saying. If, I would say like, and this is an opinion. I can give you an opinion on it. I need to read all the Scripture around it. I haven't read through this in a little while. But just kind of like knowing the gospel and knowing, you know, really, looking at the identity portions, like what we just read, you know, we've been washed, we've been sanctified, we've been justified. I don't think in all of that, okay, and now you're an earthenware vessel that's just for common use. You're just a wooden spoon that's just for common use. There's super Christians out there. Those are the golden silver ones. You're kind of in the clay category, yeah. You know, I don't think that we can, that that would work with everything else that we have. You know, if you look at a book like Ephesians, which is written by the same author, I don't think that all the things he's talking about, how we're seated in the heavenly places with Christ, I don't think that somehow it goes down to, "Yeah, but you're this earthenware, you know, vessel that has no honor. It's a dishonor." You know, I don't think so. So, here's what I'd say. A large house would be everyone. It'd be humanity, right? A large house, there are many vessels, okay? So, in this, and let's say a large house is all of humanity. You might look at it as the earth if you wanted to, but it's all of humanity, okay? A large house, there are many vessels. There's people everywhere. There's all of us, okay? Some are for special purposes, and others are for common use, okay? Now, what I would say, right out of the gates, is this is believer and unbeliever. Believers are all for special purposes. Honestly, everyone would really be for a special purpose. But, you know, we have in Luke, the Pharisees had a purpose. It says, "Now the Pharisees had rejected God's purpose for them." So, even unbelievers, there would be a special purpose for them. But really, what's the work of God? You know, what is the one thing God is requiring from everybody? Is faith in His Son, you know? So, there's that one work that God requires, and that's faith, and not everybody does this. So, you have this large house, and you have vessels, okay? There's some that are for special purposes, and others are for common use. Now, when he says here, he talks about, "If anyone cleanses himself from these things, uh, he will be an implement for honor sanctified, useful to the master, prepared for every good work." Well, how does anyone cleanse themselves from anything? Um, what did 1 Corinthians 6 just say? We were washed, washed. We were justified. We were sanctified in the name of Jesus Christ. So, how does anyone cleanse themselves from anything? They don't, apart from faith in Jesus. That's how you cleanse yourself from anything. There's no cleansing other than that. So, this wouldn't be that some, you know, I can see the whole legalistic viewpoint of this. You know, there's Christians, there's the super Christians. Those are the ones that are really good at not sinning, and they're the ones that are useful to the master for every purpose. Then there's the Christians that are, you know, they just are just living in sin, and they're just caught in sin, and they can't get out of sin, and those are the common vessels. I can see that silly interpretation there, but I don't think that, I think that that's a misunderstanding of the gospel. All of the children of God are clean. All of the children of God are. Doesn't Peter say that our faith is more precious than gold? Doesn't he say something like that too? So, like, you know, I think if you were to take all Scripture and kind of use that to interpret this, I don't think you're going to get a bad interpretation. I don't think it's going to end up like the parable of the talents that we like, where, you know, there's some high-performing Christians that are awarded really well, and then there's the low performers that are just, you know, okay, nice, fine. And then there's the ones that, you know, don't do anything, and then they get, you know, thrown in. I don't think we're going to get some bad version of that if we look at all of Scripture, and especially just look at all of Paul's writings, and the ways that he speaks about the children of God. And I don't think this would work with that. But that is a mention of sanctification. Uh, let's go back here. Now, Hebrews is really the book that's going to talk about this the most, and probably the plainest. Probably give us the plainest version of this and really lay this out. So, Hebrews, the first time you see this in Hebrews is actually some really beautiful Scripture. And I talk about this quite a bit. It's Hebrews 2:11, and it says, "For both he who sanctifies," and that's Jesus, "and those who are sanctified," that's us, "are all from one Father. For this reason, He is not ashamed to call them brothers and sisters, okay?" So, the children of God are one family. Jesus is actually our brother, because he goes on to say, "I will declare your name among my brothers and sisters, and in the assembly I will sing your praises." So, he says that down here a little bit more, and then he says, "Here am I, and the children God have given me." Uh, so, you have that, but really, what is it saying there? It's saying, "But both he who sanctifies, Jesus, and those who are sanctified, have the same Father. We have the same Dad, so we're siblings with Him. We also have the same sanctification, and why is that?" Well, what is 1 Corinthians, what did 1 Corinthians just say? Jesus is our sanctification. He is that. Um, God has made him sanctification for us. I think that's what you just referenced there, Barbados. I think, isn't that the 1 Corinthians 1:13 where he says that? So, He is our sanctification. So, when we see that Scripture there, it's actually pretty understandable that, you know, we're saying that he who sanctifies, those who are sanctified, we're all from one Father, we're one family, and we have that same sanctification. Really works very well, actually, with what you see in John 17, where Jesus is saying, you know, "For their sake I sanctify myself, so that they may truly be sanctified." It's that same sanctification. It's that same family. And Jesus goes on to say, "So that they may be one, just as we are one, I am them, and you and me." I, sometimes I reverse that, but it doesn't really matter, because you can say it both ways. Scripture says it both ways. We have Christ in us, and we are in Christ. It's both, actually, and that's really, that's really awesome. It kind of goes down to what 1 Corinthians 6 says, where anyone who is united with the Lord is one in spirit with Him. When you're one spirit, which is it? Are you in Him, or is He in you? You know, it's very hard at that point to figure out where, how to define that unity. You know, you're literally one with Him. You're literally one. So, I think that works, you know, in Hebrews here, you know, "He who sanctifies and those who are sanctified." But it's sanctified past tense. Again, this is the children of God it's talking about. So, going into chapter 10, now, chapter 10 is going to give us our best definitions of sanctification. Let me click on it, because I want to read a couple of the verses around Hebrews 10:10 to kind of give us an idea of what's going on here. There's no, you know, there's no good part to start in Hebrews 10, because the whole chapter is good. But I know we don't, I mean, like, it'd be great if we had time to read the whole chapter. There's no like, okay, this is the best part. There's no best part. I'll put it that way. There's no best part of Hebrews, chapter 10. The entire chapter is just phenomenal. But for time's sake, what you have happening here is you have the beginning of this chapter saying, "Look, the law is only a shadow of good things to come. It is impossible for the blood of goats and bulls to take away sin. It cannot happen." So, then you have a conversation between the Father and the Son. And the Son is saying to the Father, "Look, sacrifices and offerings, burn offerings and sin offerings, you did not desire, nor were you pleased with them, but a body you prepared for Me. Here I am. I have come to do your will, my God." He sets aside the first covenant to establish the second. And then you get to Hebrews 10:10, and it says, "And by this will we have been sanctified, by the offering, through the offering, rather, of the body of Jesus Christ, once for all time. By the will of God we have been sanctified, through the offering of the body of Jesus Christ, once for all time." Now, what I would ask a progressive sanctification person, I'd say, question, is Jesus going to die again? Alright, because Hebrews 10:10 says, "We have been sanctified by the offering of His body, which was once for all time." Okay, He's not going to die again, so we can't, there can't be more sanctification out there to get. If this is how sanctification happens, and the Old Testament's a testament to this too, sanctification is always by the shedding of blood. That's what he starts this chapter by talking about, is they were trying to sanctify things, and they couldn't, because the blood of goats and bulls can't take away sins. But with sanctification always being by way of blood, and now Jesus has come, and He has died, He's given His blood, He shed His blood, we have been sanctified through that offering once for all time, I think the question would be, is so is He going to die again? Like, is this something that's going to repeat itself? Like, is He going to die again? Because that's the only way we could get more holiness or get more sanctification. So, there has to be more blood. And if we're saying that also, what are we saying about His blood to begin with? Was it not sufficient? But going down here to verse 14, so just a couple of verses up here, it says, "For by a single offering He has perfected forever those who are sanctified." By a single offering, He has perfected forever those who are sanctified, okay? That just is the magnitude of the offering of the body of Jesus Christ. This never has to be repeated. It was a single offering, once for all time, and He's made you perfect through a single offering. Perfect. You're perfect because of what He did. You are perfectly sanctified. There's no, nothing to add to that. There's nothing to move on. You know, to say, "Well, we need to get more sanctification," kind of like this video was saying. "We have to get more of that." You don't. You don't have to get more of it. There's nothing to get. Uh, there's nothing beyond this. Jesus has come. The body was prepared for Him. The offering has been made. You have been sanctified, once for all time. So, let's go back and just see, that's it. Okay, so that is it. There's Hebrews 10:29. I don't really want to go into that. That's about an unbeliever. But that's really it, as far as sanctified goes in the New Testament. Now, I saw, let me go to the chat here. I saw somebody mention something from James. The book of James has been brought in in most of this confusion in 1 John 1:9, or 1 John 1:9 probably, um, out of context. So, the book of James, what would it, like, wash your hands, you sinners, purify your hearts, you double-minded? Maybe stuff like that? I could see that. They're saying, "Well, you know, you have to, you have to be..." I don't know. Maybe they're saying, like, "You have to do that. You know, you have to do those things." Uh, 1 John 1:9, of course, is going to be the centerpiece. 1 John 1:9 is a centerpiece. And in a lot of bad theology, is this idea of constant confession to remove sins. It's an absolute farce. If you, if we read through the New Testament, we can see how sins were removed, and it was not by anybody saying they're sorry. If that was the case, we could have just apologized to God, and we never needed Jesus. We could have just said, "Oh, gee, God, you know, we're sorry, and we're, you know, we're going to repent from this, and we're going to turn from this." And that's absolutely not true. I mean, if that was the case, again, you would never have needed a blood sacrifice. That's the only way sins are removed, is by the shedding of blood. Hebrews, chapter 9, says, "Without the shedding of blood, there is no forgiveness." So, that's a good one to share with someone who believes they're being forgiven over and over and over again by God. No, there's no blood. Forgiveness comes by way of blood exclusively, both in the Old Testament and the New Testament. The Old Testament, you have the Day of Atonement repeated every single year for the forgiveness of sins. And in the New Testament, you have the offering of the body of Jesus Christ, once for all time, for the forgiveness of all sins ever. So, you don't, you never have a system where people are apologizing, and that's how they're being forgiven. You never have that. That's nowhere to be found in either Testament. It doesn't exist. So, and I get, you know, I get that the logic behind it. I understand the logic behind it, and I think that's what a lot of people challenge us on, is, "Oh, so you're saying you can just," you know how they'll say things like that. You're saying you could just like, you know, I don't know, well, let's just throw out an extreme one. You could just, you know, do something to your spouse, and say you're rude to them or whatever. I guess this isn't that extreme. This happens all the time. But you're rude to them, you know, you make all these nasty comments, then you don't have to apologize. You know, you don't have to do that. It's like, that's not the same thing. Um, of course, you would want to apologize and rectify that, but that's not the removal of sin. This is completely different. Uh, the removal of sin is something that, first of all, you have to die in order to remove sin. This is a big deal. Uh, the, you know, when, when we have Romans talk about the wages of sin is death. Death is actually required. You have, the first thing you gotta do is die. You gotta die in Adam and be reborn in Christ. And Romans chapter six explains that. But this is by way of the offering of the body of Jesus Christ once for all time. He offered himself, he died on your behalf, he took your death, he hands you his life. You are in Christ, um, the, all that scripture we talked about where you're in Christ. So you died with him, you were baptized into his death, you were buried with him, you're raised a new creation. Uh, the old, never to be seen again, the old self died, crucified, gone, never to be seen again. So, all that being said, is there a lifelong sanctification? Let me wrap this up. I did transcribe that video, there was a couple of things I wanted to point out in it and I'll be quick about it because I know we've gone long. Let me grab the, the transcript here though. Uh, there's a bunch of junk I have on here. Okay, so shoot, so to kind of, in case anybody hadn't seen the video at the beginning of this, I'll, I'll read just a little bit of this here. She says sanctification means to be set apart or made holy. So what did we find out about that? When we looked in the dictionary, does sanctification mean that? I think it does, I just don't think it's a process. I, I think that that's the wrong part. And she says, and then there's positional sanctification and then there's lifelong sanctification. Okay, now we looked up every mention of sanctification in the New Testament and sanctified. We looked up both of those and we couldn't find anything about positional sanctification or lifelong sanctification. So that's an opinion, you know, that's somebody giving you their opinion, they think it's that way. But they couldn't provide any scripture to actually show us that. They can't do that because it doesn't exist. Okay? So then he goes on here and he says, uh, I'm sorry, she goes on here and she says, um, upon being saved, you are positionally sanctified. You are immediately set apart, you are God's child, you are a son or daughter of Jesus Christ. I wanna pause there for a second. And this is why I dislike the Trinity model so much, is, is this type of thing here. You see the interchangeable use? You are God's child, you are a son or daughter of Jesus Christ. That's not what scripture says. You know, when we looked at Hebrews chapter two, it didn't say a son or daughter of Jesus Christ, it said a sibling. Your, Jesus is not ashamed to call us brothers and sisters. We have one father. He says, we come from the same father and because of that, Jesus is not ashamed to call us brothers and sisters. This interchangeable use becomes scary and not, here's why. And I, I'll make this real quick, I'm not gonna rant about the Trinity model, a Tertullian's Trinity model, I'm not gonna do that too much today. Here's why I'm so against it mainly, like the, the main part. All right, the, the main reason. When we use this interchangeably and we, we use the father and the son interchangeably, which scripture doesn't do. But when we do that, it pushes forth a really bad, dangerous idea that believing in God is salvation. I've heard this firsthand from people, oh, that person believes in God, so they're saved. No, the will of the father is that you look to the son. No one comes to the father except through the son. Um, no one who denies the son has the father. And the Trinity doctrine unfortunately makes this so interchangeable. And I know that the Trinity doctrine says the son is not the father, the father is not the son. I get that, but it's like everybody misses that somehow. And it makes this so interchangeable that we're, we're just using, that we're using the father and the son, Jesus and God, we're using these, them interchangeably. And that's where you start to get into that believing in God is how you're saved. And that I worry about greatly because I don't think that's, I don't think that's correct. I think that's actually a really close to the truth, good sounding, false teaching is what I think about that. Close to the truth, good sounding, false teaching. So, I don't like it. I mean, I, I don't like that. And I don't, and I don't know, you know, I don't wanna be like, you know, say that somebody who, who says that, you know, I believe in God, so I'm saved. I'm not, I don't know, I mean, I'm not their judge. I wouldn't say that like, I, I, I think it's wrong, I think it's wrong, I think that's not what we see in scripture. I think, here, here's a question. If believing in God is sufficient for salvation, then wouldn't the Jews be saved? I mean, wouldn't all, the Jews believed in Yahweh, didn't they? They absolutely did, they're scared to death of him, they believe in him. Uh, wouldn't they, wouldn't they all be saved? I mean, so that's, that's where, you know, so like, when I kind of look at box Christianity and some, sometimes when there's never a mention of Jesus and it's always God all the time. And then you even hear them saying believing in God is how you're saved. And like I said, I've heard that firsthand. That's really not true though, is it? Because doesn't, I mean, Romans says, although they knew God, they neither worshipped him as God, you know? Romans says in the beginning, kind of the beginning, like, you know, that everybody believes in God to some degree, although they knew God, they refused to worship him as God. But they chose to serve created things rather than the creator. So to some degree, everybody believes in God or something. Maybe, maybe they call him the universe or like whatever, but they, they believe in something, right? That's not the same thing as looking to the son and believing in him, it's not. Otherwise, again, all the Jews would be saved, they all believed in God, they, they would all be saved. So that's where I start, you know, that's where I, I say the Trinity is like a path to that. Like, you know, when, when you start, the Trinity doctrine is like a, a pathway to that, to this interchangeable use of God and Jesus, the father and the son. And I don't think scripture does that. And then I think the Trinity gets the Holy Spirit completely wrong, um, completely and totally wrong. Uh, the, the Trinity gets, uh, the, the Holy Spirit completely and totally wrong. You know, you have scriptures, you know, the Trinity model says the spirit is not the father and is not the son. But you have scriptures that say the spirit is the father and is the son. So then, you know, we've, we've talked about that, you know, quite a bit. I, again, I'm not gonna rant on it, I don't mean to, but, but I, I see it reflected in what she was saying here, where she was saying that like, oh, you know, we're all children of Jesus and that's not really what we have. It's not like, it's not like, you know, okay, this is something we really need to go after, but it, but it's still, it kind of has that reflection in there, that, that interchangeable use. Anyway, that's enough of that rant. So she says, and then the really fun part where God is going through our whole lives and trying to make us holy. God is trying to make us holy. I don't think that, I, I, I wouldn't say, I wouldn't be so hardline to say that God doesn't try things. I know that's, i- if you kind of look at that, you could say, well, if he tries something and he fails, then what does that say about him? And, and I get that. I wouldn't say though, that we don't have examples, although he knows the outcome, I don't, I think we have examples of him trying things. I think, I think we would have that. Even though he would know the outcome, I think that the, the trying would be more of a demonstration, a teaching, a lesson, really knowing that something isn't gonna work. Like for an example, you can, I can think of one in the Old Testament at least, right? God gives Moses these signs to show to the Pharaoh, knowing full well they won't work. He says that, that they're not gonna work. But it's like, but he's gonna still do them. He's still, he's still, you could say try if you wanted to. He knows a hundred percent this isn't gonna work, but he's still gonna try it. And it's really because he's testifying to himself. So I, I, I wouldn't say, I wouldn't get caught on that and say that God doesn't try anything. I, I, I know it's not the best way to word it, but I don't think I would get stuck on that. I think what I would get stuck on is the idea that he's trying to make us holy. Um, how? That has to come by death of, it has to come by blood, but rather by blood, right? He didn't try to send his son to, to die, uh, to, for the world, to take away the sins of the world. He did do that. And that's how we were made holy, through the offering of the body of Jesus Christ once for all time. That's how we were made holy. So I don't think that we could say that God is trying to make us holy. I think we could say he has made us holy once for all time, he has sanctified us. So I think that that would be a wrong notion to say that, but you know, that's, that's my opinion on it. You know, it says here, um, he's gonna, and he's gonna prune us and he's gonna sanctify us. So she's gonna actually go into John chapter fifteen here, the vine and the branches. Unfortunately, really gets used for progressive sanctification a lot. She says, and it says in John fifteen that he cuts off the branches that don't produce fruit and the branches that do produce fruit, he prunes them to make sure that they bear more fruit. And if we remain in him, he will remain in us and we will bear fruit only if we are remaining in him. Let me see, I'm not super familiar with, uh, do I have a Bible here? I have the interliner one. So let's talk about John chapter fifteen and also first John chapter three. And I'll see if I can find this quickly. Like I said, I'm not super familiar with, uh, blue letter here, how we go to the books here. So John, first John is kind of John explained, right? And Jesus does say this, he says, if you remain in me, you'll bear much fruit apart from you, me, you can do nothing. He says, you know, I think he actually, doesn't he say his father is the one who prunes? I kind of think he does, but I'm not entirely sure about that. But regardless, what do we see when this, this is kind of revisited? So let's go to first John chapter three and you know what, screwed, I'm just gonna grab, hang on a second. We're gonna move one more time here in this video. Uh, because we've been having trouble with our technology today, which I never do. Like I seriously, like I never do. But let's look at first John chapter three here quickly, cause I know I've gone way over here. But I don't know, I'm enjoying the live study session here. And I, I know there's a couple of comments that I have to, uh, reply to here. So a while back I was in a Bible study and they were doing, they were doing, uh, John chapter fifteen and it was all about the vine and the branches and it was faith plus works. And it was exactly what you would think it would be. Now, they're very nice people, of course, but you know, it's, it was that, it was how do we, how do we remain in Christ? How do we abide in Christ? I think it was abide they were saying. So Jesus is saying in John chapter fifteen, if you remain or if you abide, depending on your translation in me, you will bear much fruit. Um, apart from me, you can do nothing, okay? And that's, they're basically saying like, look, you know, if you are made in him, you're gonna produce fruit. If you don't remain in him, you're not. This is actually about faith and unbelief and I can prove that because all we need to do is go to first John chapter three where this is revisited and, and read the definition of this, okay? This is the same author that wrote, John also wrote this, and this is what he says. And this is his commandment, that we believe in the name of his son, Jesus Christ, and love one another as he commanded us. The one who keeps his commandments abides in him and he in them. We know that, we know by this that he abides in us by the spirit whom he has given us, okay? So how does one abide in Christ? How does one remain in Christ? How, how does one do that? Well, by keeping his commandments. What are his commandments? Well, John tells us to believe in the name of his son, Jesus Christ, and to love one another as he commanded us. Now, the first one, you've done, you looked at the son and you believed in him, that's once for all time. You know, you, you do that, all right? Um, the father and the son have come to you and they made their home with you, all right? So that you've done, now what about love? I mean, what if you stop loving one another? Well, you actually don't. God's love has been poured out in your hearts through the Holy Spirit whom he's given you. And this is how you know, incidentally, John says, we know that he abides in us by the spirit whom he has given us. Does a Paul say in first Thessalonians about your love for one another? He says, I don't even need to talk to you about it because you've already been taught by God to love one another from the heart. So love is our native language, we have love brimming from the inside out. We're the children of God. I mean, we're, we're like our dad. You know how the children of Adam are like their dad? We're like our dad. So we used to be like our, our father Adam, but now we're like our father God and we're like our brother Jesus, we're like them, we're like our family. And our native language is love. But how does one remain? How does one abide? By keeping the commandments, believing in Jesus and loving one another. So it's not, it's not really complicated. I understand that first John, especially chapter three, it pretty much doesn't have a lot of attention given to it, like I get that. And I also get that it doesn't fit the fear climate that the church pushes with this kind of stuff, this abide in Christ, this remain in Christ. It's really simple how, how one does that, but I, I get it, I get it. You know, I, I understand why they would be saying something like that. Well, you better make sure, you know, you're remaining and that's how you're producing fruit. And if you're not remaining, you're not producing fruit, I get it. That's, that's church doctrine, but we can't find that anywhere in the New Testament, we just simply can't. It's about faith and unbelief. Jesus says, if you love me, you'll keep my commandments. They love that, they think it's talking about the commandments of Moses. Uh, it's not, it's if you love me, you'll keep those commandments to, to believe and to love one another. Those are the commandments. That's how we know, that's how we know that we're in him and he's in us. So it's not about progressive sanctification, I don't see that reflected anywhere in there. And let's just kind of end this here by reading the last part of this. She says that, and our sanctification and pruning process has been so painful. The other girl says, I don't think it's gonna be easy. Here, here's the thing, guys, this is called testimonialism and I, I don't wanna pick on them, I don't wanna hit on them here. Uh, hit, hit them on this, I mean, hit, hit on them could be taken the wrong way, couldn't it? I don't wanna hit them on this, but this is called testimonialism. And this is when somebody's had an experience in their life and they're gonna use it to promote a self-made doctrine. The church is rampant with testimonialism, especially like, okay, here's an example, tithing. Well, I had no money and I decided to give ten percent to God anyway. And then I, I went out to my mailbox and there was a check there from my insurance company that I didn't even know I was gonna get. And let me tell you, you just can't outgive God, okay? That is classic Christian testimonialism is what that is, okay? Can't find that anywhere in scripture. We're gonna go to a life experience and we're gonna use that to build or to push a doctrine that we can't use scripture to support. That's what testimonialism is. And that's what this is. And, and again, they don't mean anything by that, they're not trying to push an agenda on you, but they are absolutely dabbling in testimonialism here when they're saying something like that. That's what it is because we can't find it in scripture, okay? So then they say, they go on here and take, to kind of cement that a little bit here. They say, it has been the craziest year of our lives. Um, we're, we're mad, okay, to have lived a certain way our whole life in the world and then to be like, there's so much more I have to change. It's so funny because you can reach a level of holiness and you think that you're good enough, good. I might have missed, I might have mis-typed that, I don't think she said good enough. Let's just say good. You think that you're good and you think that you got it all and God's like, oh no, I'm gonna show you all this and you didn't even know that, you, all these things you didn't even know was there and it's so fun. Okay, levels of holiness don't exist, we can't find that anywhere in the New Testament. And I don't mean that in a critical way toward them, but I wish they wouldn't look at themselves that way. That they're trying to constantly attain a different level of holiness. There are no levels, there's holy and there's unholy. You are one or the other, you are in Christ or you are in Adam. You're not Christ Adam, you're not caught in between them. Uh, you're not half in life and half in death. You don't have a foot in both doors. You are in Christ or you're in Adam and that's it. You are holy or you are unholy, you are righteous or you are unrighteous, you are dead or alive, you are light or darkness. Scripture always deals in absolutes with this, this is absolutes, one or the other, there's no caught in between. Levels of holiness isn't something that even shows up in the Old Testament? I guess you could kind of make, I was gonna say it doesn't show up there, you could kind of make an argument for it, actually. I can think of a few things there, like for example, the people of Israel are referred to as holy, every single one of them, but yet they couldn't walk into the holy of holies, could they? So there almost is a level of holiness there, but not in the New Testament, okay? Cause we're the pinnacle of it, right? We're in Christ and Christ is in us, we are the new most holy place. We are the holy of holies and the spirit of God resides within our hearts. We are the holy of holies, we are the most, the most holy place, whichever way you wanna put that. So absolutely, I've, I've always said this, you could go up, you know how we look at the Old Testament and the Ark of the Covenant and the holy of holies and no one could go in there? You could go in there and give the Ark of the Covenant a bear hug, uh, because that golden trinket has nothing on your holiness. That's animal blood that obtained that. That's, that's, that's worthless compared to what you have, you have the blood of Christ sanctified you. You could put your feet up on the Ark of the Covenant. It, it, it has nothing, it can't touch you compared to the holiness that you have. There's, there's no comparison. The, the, the most holy place of the Old Testament is a joke compared to the holiness that you have within you. The, the sanctification that, that, the blood that you've been sanctified with? Yeah, the Old Testament system, the Old Testament blood of goats and bulls is a total joke compared to what the blood that sanctified you. It's, it's not even the same thing. So you have actual holiness, what you have in the, in the Old Testament is like a picture of holiness, it's like a model of it. Uh, Hebrews chapter ten says, the law is a shadow of the good things that are coming, not the realities themselves. So absolutely, I mean, we're, are, are Christians sanctified, are Christians holy? Absolutely, same, same sanctification, same holiness that Jesus himself has. And we're from the same father and Jesus is not ashamed to call us brothers and sisters. Is there ever any evidence in the New Testament of lifelong sanctification or positional sanctification? No, we can't find that anywhere, the Greek words don't mean that. And look, it's, it, it comes by blood. I mean, sanctification comes by blood, which has already been shed. So there's, there's no way that this could be a process of something that's happening more. So those are my thoughts on that. I saw there was a couple of comments I didn't read, so let me just look at them. Uh, Barbells had a couple of verses from Corinthians, I did read one of them, maybe I didn't get the other one. I think, is it first Corinthians nine, one nine? If I had, I'm not super familiar with blue letter yet, so I have to learn it. I think that might be the one that when Paul's introducing himself, I think he refers to, to the Corinthian churches being sanctified. I think so, so we might have missed that one.